...in college meeting in order to Daniel Phil Long, starting the Penn School District, Board of Trustees, Monday, March 21st, 2016, time to 6 o'clock. At this time, I want to just thank everybody for coming out and being a part of our meeting today. If I could hear everybody please stand with us. Do I have an invocation by Maurice Tiger giving a call about the federal league?
Yes, sir. Come on, strand the gracious God out and deep we are thankful for this day, Lord. The beauty of the earth, changing of the seasons, Lord, that you're in charge of. We're so thankful for that, Lord. Lord, we just want to pray for our district, each and every member in our district that works so diligently, Lord, to make the education of our children better. And we just pray that the decisions that each and every one makes in their daily jobs will be in accordance with thy will. Lord, this day, we want to thank you and thank you for the love and grace you stow upon us each and every day of our lives. And, Lord, we just ask a special blessing on the Bruce Art family this night, Lord, as they have lost their dear love one. Mr. Roy Bruce Art was once one of our board members and his wife, Ms. John E. Bruce Art, was one of our teachers for a very long time, just being dear and dear to the family, Lord, at this special time. Now, we ask thee to bless each and every board member here tonight, Lord, as we make our decisions to better the education of our children. And, Lord, we ask you to pray, we pray for our country and our leaders of our country in these troubled times, Lord. Now, I ask you, Lord, to go with us, bless us and keep us, and thank you for your love and grace again, for in Jesus' name I pray these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move right into our agenda, column four. We'll consider financial report for February 2016.
Here we have a couple of parts to the financial report for this. There are several pages sitting under desk. Part of the budget report unfortunately got left out. We noticed it Friday afternoon, so we have it sitting there under desk. First of all, we'll turn to page A, and that page shows that we have total income of $10,144, or sorry, $10,144,000, and total expenses of $5,824,000. Now, the majority of this is tax collections that 93% of tax collections that come in at this point, those are due, you know, January 31st out late, so that's the reason for the large difference here. And we'll take that money and earn some interest on it and pay it out as those expenses catch up. So, that's what you're looking at there. Page B, you'll go to page B. This is broken down in actual expenditures based to the budget. So, we've collected almost 86%, 85.7% of total revenue we set out to collect. Again, 93% of our tax income has come in. So, that's the vast majority of that. We've spent roughly 51%, and I'll explain to you when we get into the breakdown in a minute. We're right now, or as of this report, we're through six months. So, roughly 50% is about where we should be, and 51% is a good percentage. And I'll tell you that because we pay our employees, they're accrued over 10 months, they're working months, we actually accrue their entire salary. And then, we do not accrue that, although we do pay it out over the summer months, the software accrues it. So, the vast majority of all our 10-month people, for example, will be completely paid within our system on an accrual basis, and we account for that for those working months. So, you'll see expenditures quite a bit less in summer months. Food service has $373,000 in revenue there, that's roughly about 50%. They've spent around 47%. The shared services there, that's the special ed shared services, we have actually gotten roughly 45% and then 48%. Of course, we always are a month behind on one of those payments. We'll make that monthly payment at the first of every month, so that's just a little bit behind there as far as the end of the month, February. Interest and sinking funds, again, we have quite a bit of revenue due to tax. We have 104% of the projected collections in the revenue account, although we don't really have any total expenditures because we don't pay those note payments, or the majority of those note payments, till August. We will have one note payment for the field, the first note payment for the field coming due in April, April 15th is when that's due. So, you'll see that on the May report, on May and April. Now, we're going to move to the packet that was found under your desk. This is the detail of, unless, I'm sorry, before we move on, are there any questions on those two pages? If you go to the first page, it actually says page 2 of 35. We only pick out the budgeted funds that y'all set out the budget and give you reports on. So, those are sitting here. So, we've collected the 93.19% of our local property taxes. We anticipate we'll collect the full 98% that we set out to budget. We don't have any reason right now to believe otherwise. The major payments have paid. We've got those last, in February, or in February credit, and in February, so that's why you're seeing this major, the 8.1 million. 4.2 of that came in in February, and that's what that's showing there. So, we have state program revenues of 220, I'm sorry, realized to date of 432, but again, 118,000 of that is attributable back to last year. So, but those are the payments that have come through so far year-to-date. The, of course, and then we don't have any federal programs. That's for the Sharers money that we actually account for in 272, or started accounting for in 272, that will be moved as an end-of-the-year entry at the end of this year. And we can give you an update on that next month. Any questions on that page? Okay, if you move to the next page, page three, I'm going to really focus on general operating funds with this report. You're welcome to look through the rest of it. It all looks completely fine according to, based on what we've spent and where we're at in this year. So, if you look at the function totals, for example, function 11 total is 57%, which again is over that 50%, but the majority of payroll is paid out of instructional funds for teachers that are paid over 10 months. So, again, those are accrued, and that gives it a higher percentage because we pay them at a rate based on their day's work each month, the system does. They get an actual annualized compensation throughout the year. Again, that's the same in 12, it's a little over your 50%. That's a lot of your 10-month people are paid in, out of 12, not a lot of them, but that's making up the difference, putting that right at 57% there. We have a couple of items here that you run down through that last column, make percent expended, that I'm going to draw your attention to. Some of these things, and you'll see them at 90%, but we've spent the money for that for this year, a lot for this year, and those individuals know that. And if you'll call, if you'll look especially guidance, counseling, professional and contracted services, that has a lot to do with software that we purchased at the very first of this year so that they can utilize that all year. So, we'll make that one-time purchase for the year, and then you'll have that money expended basically for the entire year, so you're sitting at 90% for most of those expenditures. That's also true in 34, the very last line of this page of the report, you're sitting at 93%. Again, that's other operating expenditures, that's our insurance that we pay in October. That's one-time expense, spends all the money at the first of the, at the year, and it sits at 90 or so percent the rest of the year. You'll see that same, if you turn the page, you'll see that same effect in 51, other contract, other operating costs, you're sitting at 80, I'm sorry, it's 90, I wrote over it, 96%. 96% there, again, that has to do with insurance on buildings. So, that cost is sitting there a little high as far as percentage-wise, but again, that's a one-time expenditure that we won't have through the rest of the year. The only other one I'm going to call your attention on this page, you're looking at 86% in security and monitoring services for professional and contracted services, that's security for the games. And again, we're through most of the sports that we provide security for. We're only into softball and baseball, and those expenses will greatly decline because those games are fewer and don't need as many security officers active. Majority of them have more security offers at the football games, basketball games, and that. Are there any questions on cost 199? That would be that page, and the, actually, the next page. The rest of this report is very, very good. We don't have any expenditures out of line. They're all within the, I'll take them back, we done, professional contracted services on page nine of the 35 there, and national breakfast, that also has to do with software programs that we purchased at the first of the year, and then we utilize that all year. And then, capital outlay, which we did, had a purchase at the very first of this year, which was approved for that $6,900. We're going to have a couple of expenditures in here that we're going to draw your attention to. Any questions on the rest of that report that was on your desk? The, if we'll go back to page one of the booklet, we're going to not, we're going to skip the one and two, and we've talked about those expenditures we have a little over 100% collected in revenues for, you know, our debt service there because tax collections have come in. We haven't really spent anything out of that, again, that's due in August. The next page that I would like to draw your attention to would be page 20. There, I violence here, we are needing your approval on to purchase. The first two have to do with required expenditures out of our cafeteria fund there. So, she is looking to purchase because you can only carry over so much money every year by law in that fund, where you're having to spend down that fund balance. She does a great job of managing that money, but again, there is also a negative to that because the federal government doesn't allow us, or TEA doesn't allow us to carry that money forward. So, what's in, new furniture, cafeteria tables for South Elementary, and then sneeze guards, new sneeze guards for West Junior High in the high school. And those two vendors are there, she got quotes and this came in very well, she's very pleased with the service these vendors provide. Any questions about those two? The next one is a universal time, we, over spring break, we had a lightning strike on our high school, and our intercom is, system is now out. We went ahead and put this on here because we need to get that replaced, that's a security issue, and we actually have started that process. We did not go out and get quotes, and the main reason is, is that they are, this security system, the intercom system, interfaces with a system we already have up there, fire, the systems that are already in place in the building. It is proprietary, and any quote that we would have gotten would have required much greater expenses to retrofit those other systems or replace entire systems. It was not fiscally prudent for us to even think about that because that would require great amounts of capital to go in and redo all those systems. They're working fine, but we don't have any issues with that. So, we're going with a system that is integrated. Now, I will tell you, the cost of that system to us, once insurance, once the insurance approves a claim, will only be $2,500 because it is covered by, that equipment that didn't get struck by lightning is covered under our coverage, and we will have to pay the deductible. We are putting it on here because it's an expenditure greater than $10,000, in which we will have to spend in the future, and, but we will, we will be reimbursed once approved, Any questions on that expenditure? Okay, the last two have to do with mowing services. We are looking at using Meadow's mowing service just for the remainder part of this fiscal year. We will rebid this open to everybody. We did get quotes from several vendors that offer mowing services, and theirs was the best on a per-time basis, and we use that to calculate that for their service every week through August 31st. In this, this summer, if we decide to keep a service like that, we will do a full bid for a much larger project for the entire year. The money is coming from part-time help that we have hired in the past, past years, that we have spent at least $15,000 on those services, just in part-time help, getting those, getting those extra people up there, sending our guys to these two campuses so that they can, so that they can mow that area, or, you know, it takes a couple days for them to do that. So, all our guys here, not all of them, most of our guys here are tied up in that, a couple days a week. If we contract this service using those funds, we believe wiser, we have somebody else taking care of that, our guys are freed up to take care of what we have here, including the fields, and they save time and they are able to get to maintenance items that may have been, not neglected, but may, they may not have been able to get to because they had to go over there and mow it, you know, twice a week.
Jim, the next question is-
Yes, sir.
-that's just going to bill them some of them?
No, sir. They will bill us every number of hours or per time to do their- Yes, sir, it's a per-time basis, $675 per time. And he did calculate it because it is the growing season through August, he did calculate it to come every week, and then we'll do this on Saturday. So, our kids that are into those campuses will not have to wait to go outside. They can go outside just like they normally do, and whereas our guys have to spend their hours here, these guys will come in on Saturday and do it. So, there's a little added benefit there, but 675 a time, and that is every week. And if there's a drought and it doesn't grow, he did reassure me that he won't come out. If it doesn't need to be done, he won't come out that week, and he'll just bill us flat.
Thank you.
This is the most it would be.
There's exactly what all of the, the campuses, are we still going to be mowing the fields?
Everything at South and here is taken care of, including the fields. Now, the fields there, I'm sorry, Rick, I have-
We're doing, we're doing this part.
This part, yes.
So, we don't have to haul the trailers and the boars and stuff.
Everything there will be taken care of.
Junior High and West. And Junior High has a pretty big field over there itself.
Yeah, they were spending quite a bit of time in doing it. Then we were also hiring part-time help to do that, so we can utilize this money and even save our guys time. The last item on this is a, we have on here to replace a tractor, and we have a smaller tractor, it's a 52-inch, 52-inch tractor, that is older and needs $4,500 worth of replacement and rebuild work. We're putting this on here to ask y'all to, y'all, to ask y'all to approve the ability for us to replace that with a larger mower, a new mower, and one that doesn't obviously need $4,500 worth of work. Once you get into older mowers and needing that much work, that's a major overhaul for a mower that size. It's really not even worth that because honestly, although it would give us broken, granted, there's only 2,000, but they wouldn't, if we had fixed it, they wouldn't have given us any more. So, it's not worth fixing at this point. But, we are at a point where we do still need two mowers, even with, even with the West, I'm sorry, the West and Junior High being taken care of. Any questions about any of those expenditures? Again, none of, none of these, the bottom three items, the lightning strike obviously won't need a budget amendment because we will recoup insurance money on that. The Meadow service, we're moving from a line item that we were going to spend anyway to take care of mowing, part-time help, and then the contractor, we're working into the current budget, the maintenance budget. So, we're not approving any budget amendments for those items. We're just trying to better utilize that money.
Y'all own sales, what rank?
It is a John Deere.
No.
I'm sorry.
Grasshopper.
I'm sorry.
We got quotes on this?
You have a quote.
Yes. Quote of John Deere and all of them.
Yeah, we got, we got quotes from others, didn't we, did we not? All right, the next page is our, again, our food service report. She has already made this year $22,000. We're going to figure out how to spend that by the end of the year because that just adds to what we already have to spend now. So, what we're getting approved is about the difference, and we'll go from there. So, we may have to come to y'all next month to spend some more money, but it's a requirement by TDA, so we can't keep that money growing, it's good to see what she's doing. We're giving free breakfasts and doing things that we can, but we have to take care of that money. So, that's that report there. The investment report shows an influx of amount of money that we earned in interest, which is, which is a great thing to report, but then again, it's primarily due to money that has come in for taxes. So, we'll gain that over the next several months. It'll go, it'll go down as far as what we're gaining per month because we will have to utilize that money for our budget for the rest of this year. Any questions about the rest of the report?
Jim, on the utility?
Yes, sir.
On page 24? The electricity? Do we have any idea? It shows two field houses, which field houses are? They got two different meters, I know that, but that one there, the second field house?
Yes.
Went from $193 to $1,037.
That was not an incorrect input, an input error. I mean, if, just like you said, to go back to September and October, those bills are that high. So, we're just may have gotten the benefit of just nice weather in February, or in January, I'm sorry, that we didn't have to run, you know, the, there's much, I don't know if that's the answer, but I will find that out for you.
Go, any more questions for Jim?
Mr. President, you could say it before you make the motion. There's nine on page eight, every reimbursement. We have two separate versions tonight, so I might have to hold on to two versions to myself. I'd be mad. Now let's change them. It's on page eight.
I'll make a motion and we accept the numbers on page eight. Motion by Jericho Stone, second, I might go on our favor raise right hand. For you, you asked about-
I'll hand raise the other side.
Did you raise that?
We did. Page eight, most, but it's a man of albums. I'll make the motion. Motion by Mike Arco, second, about John Snyder, our favor raise right hand. I'll hand raise motion carried.
Like this little note, on that page B, the future of your comparisons of this year and last year, on our enrollment, you're at 36 students from across the school this year. That's a big difference.
36?
36, so far.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, we move to the, column five, that's the sent out. I recommend we approve the, our minutes from the meeting, last meeting. Need a, we'll be discussing minutes from the record of the meeting February 15th, 2016, and also a special meeting on February 19th, 2016. Need a motion for that. I make a motion and approve both of those. Been moved by Jericho Stone to approve, second by Maurice Kipper, our favor raise right hand. I'll hand raise motion Kipper's. Next out is the minister's report, I'll turn it over to Senator.
Okay, on page 62, we have that's the board. There are a couple that I'd like to call your attention to. The one that I highlighted in yellow is the reception for Coach Walton and his family. You're actually going to be on spring break where his wife is now, so it'll be easy for him, for his wife to come up and bring the children, so we're going to meet them. We plan on having it here from 11:00 to 12:30 on Wednesday, April 6th. And right below that, on April 7th, is the school dinner at weeknight and training. We'll meet here at 5:00 and you want them like right together. The dinner will start at 5:30 and the training at 6:00. And some of you are going to have a conflict on that day. Actually, I had a conflict on that day. But, right below that, April 7th is the day that's been set for the human relay. So, you and I'll probably split, and you stay here and take care of the relays, and I'll go with you. Our last part-
I'll get a gun for you too.
The only other thing, Roy Bruce Art Services, I don't think it can say at the end of that. They said it would live during the week, so I'll try to see if I have that information.
What they told me to say at the end is they're looking at Thursday.
If you'll let me know when you have that information, that's services and this special Next, 63, I'm going to ask Linda Martin to come up. You know that we had my cafeteria on this year, and those things take a lot, even if you're doing everything right, it takes a lot of planning and preparation to show people what all you're doing right. And so, I had told you earlier at meetings that they had given us an excellent review, a perfect review, and I told you that we talked about it here when we had the official word, and we have it now. So, I'd like to present this to Linda, Linda, you want to come up? Where would you like to get this picture?
Wherever y'all can get it.
Is this good?
That'll work. So, you, you can act excited about it.
That is a smile.
Well, not you, her. I got her smiling, those two guys.
And if you want me to keep it, we'll put it up over your own wall. Now, we'll say that-
I put a copy of the mom's already.
Okay. The lady that came to do this, Rita, was her last name, Mayor?
Mayhar.
Mayhar. Just kind of scary. I mean, she was nice, but she was thorough, and I thought she was a little scary. But, when she left to the district, she said we had done very, very well, and really bright on the cafeteria. She said there would be one finding because she saved too much money. But, she called back, I think within a day or so, and she said, because Linda already had a plan of what was going to be done with that money, that she was going to take that finding off, and she said, we're looking at a perfect audit, she said- She said, I wanted to tell you how unusual that is. She said, that just doesn't happen. And I think this is your second one in a row. And this is a repeat, so we appreciate Linda and all the cafeteria ladies. Appreciate it.
Ms. Porter, would you mind reading that?
Yes. This is Dangerfield, Texas Department of Agriculture Certificate of Achievement. Let's present it to Dangerfield Longstar in Phillipsville District for achieving a rating of excellence in the two thousand fifteen, sixteen administrative review. The Texas Department of Agriculture extends its appreciation for your continued commitment to promote and advance the health and well-being of those you serve. The department looks forward to drawing this partnership as we prepare today's schoolchildren to be tomorrow's leaders. And it's signed by the Commissioner of Agriculture, Sidney Alford. And if you know much about cafeteria services these days, you know it is not easy. It takes a lot of math to beat those whole grains and calories and fat and this and that and the other, and still make the food edible.
And still get it out there on time.
Right, it has to be on time.
I would think that whenever the lady called to have our little interview before we started this this year, that it just sort of opened up Miss Paul's eyes of a whole lot of different things about our food service department, because they were asking all these questions. And she says, you act like a dad. Yes, we do. But we tried to keep it all here.
The only thing I don't like is that our food service department, and Linda can't get off that, it said terrible stuff they call butter, and then you put on your baked potatoes, it's powdery. But I don't think she has a choice on that.
Well, we do have a choice, but some schools ought to do that, and some don't.
Well, we might not look at that.
If I can make the calories work, we're looking at.
Linda, thank you very much.
And at your place, you have a review summary. If you want to say anything about that, Linda, they check one of your places.
Yeah, each one of you have a review summary. It just gives a list of the different things that they ask us to make sure that we're doing the guidelines for. And when you go to looking at, there's nine different sections, but inside each one of those sections, there is probably fifteen more things to go with that that each one of the managers have to comply with on a daily basis. So, if y'all have any questions, I don't mind answering them if I can. Because all these guidelines have to be met for us to be able to get the award that we have gotten the last two times. And Miss Paul has told me we have to do it at least one more time. And I said, well, that's another challenge, so I don't know. But if you have a question, I'll answer it for you by hand. Oh, and also, while we're, while I'm talking, so far, the food service department has spent sixty-six hundred dollars this year on the kids getting free breakfast. That will come out of our budget.
That's our share, not a total share.
And that's still, I think you said you left me money to spend. I don't know what my budget.
Let's see if we can do it with real budget that time.
I don't think, I don't think so. It's a cow's just a cow's.
I'll hope.
But I still say it'll be.
I'll work on that.
And the only other thing I have is on six-four, it gives you the details of that dental meeting at region eight. And I think Juan said that she does the exam tonight. We'll get it to ten.
Thank you very much, Ms. Porter. Now, we move down to our next item, action item seven point one. Consider approval of out-of-state travel for South elementary students.
Yes, sir, fourth graders wanting a field trip to Sycor. Great thing about going to Sycor is it's always, the things they offer there are always in line with our science teach. And so, the kids are gonna get to do some interactive stuff, and so on. They love going to Sycor, it's a great trip, and we love for you guys to allow fourth graders to take that trip. It'll be worth their time.
I like that motion to approve.
Motion by Mike Allen, second by Jim Snyder, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Seven point two, consider approval of instructional material allotment and ticket certificates, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, this is for the next school year, and this is what you do each year, where you certify that all the teach, that the teachers have all the tools that they need in order to teach the Texas teach, which is our curriculum. So, before Martha can spend that I and I money, allotment money, this has to be served on.
I recommend approval of the instructional material allotment, as recommended by administration.
Move out. Derek Stern, second by Marie Skipper, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Next item, seven point three, consider approval of amendments to two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen district calendar.
Okay, we are asking you to make one change on the district calendar. The only change is a week of spring break. We're asking you to move it down a week next year, because, mainly because that's when the college is taking their break, and we're in conjunction with the animals and your rated classes, so we help those students. We actually contacted the college before we did that first calendar, and they had not had their meeting yet, they weren't sure when their spring break was gonna be. We felt like it might be the week that they chose, but we thought it would be good to have two weeks in between spring break and the time we do our state test out. But as we've gone back and looked at that, we feel like it would be more advantageous to do our spring break at the same time. And that's when most of the other schools in our general area are taking their spring break. So, we're just asking you to approve that amended calendar.
I make the recommendation we approve the amended calendar, as recommended by administration.
Dear Stern, please second. Second, Mike Allen, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Seven point four, consider approval of interlocal agreement between Morris County and Dangerfield Longstar ISD.
So, we're adding you to approve this agreement so that we can rent the voting equipment from Morris County instead of an outside vendor like we've done in the past.
I make the recommendation we approve the interlo- interlocal agreement holding station.
Moving by Derek Stern, second by Jim Snyder, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Seven point five, consider approval of prospering power, prospering power nutrition and corporate in an interlocal agreement between Carpel ISD and Dangerfield Longstar ISD.
So, on this, we're just saying, we're just asking that you approve this agreement so that Linda can use this additional food vendor to provide more and better choices for her meals.
Are, are we just buying more quantity? Is that how we're giving our savings, Linda?
Yes, part of it is. Going with this local other school, I had the opportunity to order different products, but I also had the opportunity sometime during the year that we get what they call free pounds, where I can process more items for the kids, and I don't have to have any pile money to cover that.
I recommend we approve the interlocal agreement between Carpel ISD and our school district.
From Derek Stern, second by Marie Skipper, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Seven point six, consider adoption of order of cancellation to District Four, trusty election.
Okay, we're asking that we cancel this trusty election for District Four since we all does not have any opposition.
Motion by Jim Snyder. Second, by Mike Allen, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, seven, he just saying, motion carries. Move down to seven point six. I'm sorry, seven point seven. Consider approval of budget amendments.
What you all have on seven point seven and two is three main amendments there. The first one, while this is not required, because we can move money within the law across functions, as long as it doesn't cross the twenty-five percent of total threshold, I, I typically make it a habit, I do make it a habit, of presenting y'all these to, to review, because when you see, when you see the budget and you see money being moved between functions, y'all may have questions. So, it's always better, and I view it as better, is go ahead and give it to you beforehand. So, what we're moving, what we're doing here is need for assessment instruments for diagnostic concerns in younger children. So, we're moving that money from instruction to guidance counseling so that we can purchase that material in a correct function. Any questions about that one? The, the following two are the purchase of school trays and the purchase of sneeze guards and tables for the cafeteria. And both of those amendments are for the cafeteria. Again, that money was required to spend, because we can't keep, we can't keep scot-piling it. They won't let us do it, and she does too good of a job managing her budget, so. Any questions on that?
What was the eleven thousand, it sounded?
So, these are all capital equipment, but those are the tables, yes.
She got tears several years ago, and she's getting new tables this year.
Cafeteria look nice, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to vote for approval of budget amendments. Second, motion by Mike Allen, second by Derek Stern, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Seven point eight, consider approval of early voting ballot board judge, deputy, early voting clerk.
So, we're asking you to approve John Blatt as the early voting ballot board judge, and Wendy Lukey as the deputy, deputy early voter clerk.
Need a motion on section seven point eight. Make a motion to approve, action item seven point eight. Motion by Mike Allen, second by Jim Snyder, all hands favor raise right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. Seven point nine, consider adoption of tasking policy update one oh four affecting local policy EEH, FB, FD, FEB, FFC, and FFH.
Okay. As you look through this, you saw legal policy, and you also saw local policy. Legal policy you wanna act on, but that's just gonna be in place. Local policy is what you have a choice of acting on. So, I'm gonna go through this and explain a little bit about the six policies. Most of the changes are very subtle, some just change in wording, not, not a lot of major changes. If you will go over to where the explanatory notes start, it's, it's a page that's exactly the bandit points, where the numbers at the bottom start again with number one, and up at the top it says explanatory notes. Are you with me? If you'll go back one, two, three, four, five pages back, and it says explanatory notes at the top. Many notes are easier to understand. I mean, we could talk about them using either ones, but I'm, I think you can follow me better if you're, if you're looking at the explanatory notes. Go from the page three, that's that twenty-four policy. It's EEH, local. And the way I can figure out what the difference is, I make a copy of the old policy on a white paper and a copy of the, no, copy of the older thing, and copy of the newer one. And just, just compare all this word by word. The only difference on this one, or the main difference on this one, is it's talking about homebound students. And in the past, it said a student can be considered for a homebound program when you're expected to be out four weeks. Now, it says that it does not have to be consecutive weeks. For instance, if a student has a chronic illness, they're gonna be out this week, but then they're able to come back a week, but they're gonna be out another week. In the past, you just, you had to be out four consecutive weeks before you qualified for homebound. But in a case like this, you can go ahead and qualify for homebound if it's a chronic illness. Okay, the next one is FB local, if you'll go over to page five. The new policy on this, it's actually taken it out policy, and they put it as an exhibit. This is for the Title IX coordinator, and also the five oh four coordinator, which is Martha in both cases. The reason why they put it in an exhibit rather than policy is because, like, if Martha left and somebody else came in, then you have to have a policy change. This way, you don't have to have a policy change, because in the new policy, it's gonna leave that out, and it's gonna include it exhibit, and that's where her name and contact information is. Does that make sense? That way, you just don't have to change policy when you change people. Okay, then if you'll look at page six, this is FB local. And the difference in this is improved residence. The new policy says that there can be administrative regulations developed by the superintendent for proof of residence. And a lot of times, it's almost a phase of policy catching up with practice, because we already do that. When someone enrolls, we do ask for proof of residence. We'll ask for a driver's license with correct address or a utility bill paid in that person's name. Or times they're not, it will stand to a home visit. We do that quite often, but a lot of times they're not having a bill in their name or a correct driver's license yet, so it will stand the home visit. So, that was not mentioned in the old policy. So, once again, it's almost like policy is catching up with practice. That's what we already do. And then on page seven, FEB local. The change on this was very, very minute. There's a cross-reference in this, because it talks about the Title IX. No, because it mentions the residency. So, there's just a cross-reference, and the new one, it sends you back to FB to see what the requirements are for proving residency. Just a cross-reference, that's all that was. And then on page eight, FFH local. This is for the liaison for homeless students, and that is also Martha. And again, they've taken it out of policy, and they put it in as an exhibit. That way, if you change people, you don't have to change policy. It's not actually a policy, it's an exhibit. And then FFH, on page eight. That policy is several pages long, seven pages long. The only difference is, the new policy, where it mentions the Title IX coordinator, there's a cross-reference, and it sends you back to that exhibit to see who that person is, rather than to the policy, because you won't be in policy from now on. So, do you have a question about one of those, or a comment to either of us?
No questions, we either motion, motion to adopt. Can we, can we mention each one?
It's two states to make the motion back.
I move that the board had revised, or delete, of policies as recommended by Taffy Policy Service.
I move that the board add or revise, or delete local policies as recommended by Tad, the Policy Service, and according to instruction sheet, Tad, the local policy manager, let that one board with the following changes.
You did make new changes? Y'all did make new changes.
Delete with the following changes.
Motion by Miguel Olson, second by Jerus Thomas, all in favor raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. At this time, we're gonna go into co-session, as per Texas Department Code five five one, open cell support, as here one of these exchanges. Okay, at this time, it's eight forty-two, back into our open session. In our co-session, we deliberate on employees' contract resignation letters and also hiring new personnel. At this time, we need a motion on teachers, counselors, diet practitioners, and librarian and nurses' contracts.
I recommend we renew the teachers, counselors, diet practitioners, librarians, and nurses' contracts as recommended by the administration, specifically the sheets that say, Ms. Paul's date of three twenty-one sixteen.
And move by Jerus Thomas, second by Marie Skipper, all in favor, raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. At this time, we have Ms. Paul to read the letters of resignation of keep this resigned.
Hey, I'm accepting these letters of resignation, Latrice Cameron, Stephen Coleman, Samantha Masquist, Robert Cornell, and Aunt Erin Bowles.
Next motion is out of the court, deliberate on hiring new personnel.
Make a motion, we have Devin Nelson as high school science teacher and coach, and Jordan Wood as the high school history teacher and coach, second.
And motion by Mike Allen, second by Jim Snyder, all in favor, raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries. At this time, we'll move down to next item on the agenda. We turn to action on our co-session, which we just had, and now we up to number eleven, future topics.
Other than the important dates that we've already talked about, the only thing I have is our next regular board meeting is April eighteenth.
All right. We have anything from the board members? If not, need a motion on, yeah. Seven, been motioned by Marie Skipper, second by Mike Allen, all in favor raise your right hand. All hands raised, motion carries, we are up there.